Good evening. The time is now six thirty P. M. I will call the February third, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We all bow our heads, please. We come to you, Father, most graciously and humbly, asking for your grace, your blessings, to continue to flow on the great city of Lawrence. We ask right now a special prayer for our public, our city workers, our public safety officers. We pray for our leadership in our city as well, Father. We also continue to thank you for good health and wealth and prosperity. We wish that upon our city and we continue to thank you for that that you have given us. Lord, we also, in this time, we ask for a special prayer for our country. We ask that you put your hand on our leadership and help to guide us in the right directions. We ask all these things in the Most High and Precious Name. Amen.
The next agenda item is roll call of members and determination of quorum. Let the record reflect that there are nine councilors present and that we have a quorum. This meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with Indiana open door law, and copies of the agenda are located at the back of the meeting room. Also, for any citizens wishing to speak under citizens' comments later in the agenda, please sign in using the sign-in sheet at the back of the room. The next item on the agenda is comments of council members and special recognitions and resolutions. Do we have any comments from any of our councilors this evening?
I have a comment, please. The Indiana Legislature is doing some legislating which could severely impact the city of Lawrence. Contact Governor Braun. There are things we need to worry about. Proposed property tax legislation by Indiana legislators could result in nearly two billion dollars in funding losses. This would impact the city of Lawrence's safety, economic development, essential municipal services, and more. And also consider, the Indiana State Legislature needs to be challenged when it comes to trying to gut the city of Lawrence's infrastructure through legislation such as House Bill fourteen oh two and Senate Bill four forty-three. If passed, these would allow the business personal property tax over three years to be reduced to zero, a major loss of funding.
Do we have any other comments? The next item on the agenda will be the approval of minutes of our regular meeting of January fifteenth. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes of the meeting of January fifteenth?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I second.
Thank you, Counselor Chavez, and thank you, Counselor Jennings. All right, is there any further discussion? We will now proceed with the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. All righty, let the record reflect that we have a unanimous decision. The next agenda item is the signing of vouchers and approval of claims and authorizations of payments. Do we have any discussion or questions?
President, I've got a small question I want to add.
Can we get a motion first?
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
All righty. The motion, is it to approve all of the vouchers?
So my motion is to approve all but the cover letter that needs to be updated to reflect a duplicate entry on the cover sheet. The data that, do you have it in your notes?
Of the claim payment?
Of the cover letter, the cover letter. Here's the one. Okay, that would be January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. That specific cover letter that shows duplicate submission.
January?
Uh-huh, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
We have one for January fifteenth.
Is that January or was that December?
We have one for December fifteenth.
December.
But January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah.
Duplicate?
No, this is not.
This is not the duplicate. The duplicate.
You have it. This right here is November the fifteenth.
Okay.
That's November the fifteenth.
Okay.
And I'm sure you, this right here is where this was you guys approved of. You're gonna approve.
We already approved that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's.
Thank you. So there needs to be a correction on the cover letter for the PR claims dated November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is on the cover sheet for December second, two thousand twenty-four, and it is also on the cover sheet for the voucher, the cover letter dated January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. So we just need that updated so that it's not showing on both cover letters.
And then this one right here. December fifteenth.
Okay.
So you have one out here that says December fifteen.
Okay, and the second correction on that cover letter needs to be made. On the cover letter dated December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, PR claims for one million seventy-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents is on the cover letter dated December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and it's also on the cover letter dated January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. So if those can be corrected, it'd be much appreciated. So I would like to make the motion excluding those. Thank you.
So just for the record, councilors, those corrections that Counselor Chavez put as part of her motion will not be considered with your vote this evening. Should this get a second, they'll be moved to your next meeting for consideration.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Jennings. All right, so we have it first and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I don't know if this pertains or not, so I'm gonna try to make sure I get it correct. There's an ordinance. One dot two dot one dot six E provides that the city controller shall, at the end of each month, submit under oath to the Common Council a report of the accounts of the city and showing revenues, receipts, expenditures, and sources of revenues. How many times has the controller submitted something under oath? Can anybody answer that question?
Are you talking about a monthly budget report under oath?
Yeah.
Is there anyone from the administration that would be able to answer that question?
I can't answer to the under oath part, but as of last year, the administration made good faith effort to make sure we update the monthly financial report online to make sure it's accessible to the council and to the public on a regular basis. I believe they're still working on December, but I could be wrong on that, to make sure that's readily available to the council. But just know that it takes several days to reconcile, and that is what we're working on. If you have any particular questions, I would suggest emailing the controller regarding that matter and be able to provide the council with a response.
I think moving forward, we should probably, you know, abide by this ordinance. Am I wrong?
Yeah, I think that it is the desire of the council. We appreciate the efforts that have been made to host those, to make those available either at our desk or whatever. But I think that there needs to be additional steps taken to make sure that we are legally following the spirit of the ordinance, which, for transparency, says that the budget, monthly budget report should be submitted under oath to the council with all those items that Counselor Jennings just remade. So I think we've got step one of the process down, and now we need to, we need to get to step two so that we can feel comfortable about every month where we are with our finances.
I understand. Thank you, Counselor.
Is there any further discussion? We will now proceed with the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right.
Aye.
You said aye, so we did have a negative, so we'll proceed with the roll call vote. I will call you by name, and please just vote aloud. This is for the approval.
January fifteenth vouchers.
Counselor Giles?
Oh, aye.
Counselor Wells?
Nay.
Counselor Chavez?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Kramer, aye. Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
Counselor Freeman?
Aye.
Counselor Crone?
Aye.
Counselor Missouri?
Aye.
All righty, let the record reflect that we have an eight to one vote. All righty, the next agenda item is reports of committees. Do we have any reports of committees this evening? No? All righty. We will continue with new business, and we will begin with the council appointments to the Economic Development Commission. The council has one appointment to make to the Economic Development Commission this evening. I will seek a nomination for this appointment. Do we have any nominations?
I recommend Ray Anderson.
Ray Anderson? Do we have any other nominations? All righty, do we have any discussion?
Ray Anderson.
Do I have a second for the nomination? Second, all righty. We will now proceed with the vote. All those in favor for appointing Ray Anderson to the Economic Development Commission, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All righty, we will proceed with the roll call vote. Counselor Giles?
Aye.
Counselor Wells?
Nay.
Counselor Chavez?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Kramer, aye. Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
Counselor Freeman?
Aye.
Counselor Crone?
Aye.
And Counselor Missouri?
Aye.
All righty, let the record reflect that we have an eight to one vote to appoint to the Economic Development Commission. All righty. And then the next item on the agenda, we have proposal number one, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, could you please read the proposal into the record?
Proposal number one, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-four, an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the Police Department and the Fire Department for the year twenty twenty-five.
Right, thank you, Madam Clerk. It is my understanding that the administration would like the council to consider passing the ordinance tonight. In order to do so pursuant to ordinance one-two-two-seven and Council Rule twelve, section four A, the council will need to provide unanimous consent to do that this evening. If unanimous consent is received, then we will receive, we will need a two-thirds vote in the council to the affirmative for passing this evening. Before I proceed with requesting consent and a potential vote, I would like to ask if there's anyone from the administration here this evening who can speak to the need for this proposal and for why we would suspend the votes to pass tonight on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilors. As discussed in multiple email communications, so thank you for passing the CBA last year, collective bargaining agreement between police and fire for our public safety staff. Additionally, reflective in that it should have been a police and fire salary ordinance which you also passed. During communication sometime last year, whether it's our, the unions, the council, I'm not sure, there were a couple positions and tech pay and specialty pay positions that were kind of left off there and that should be, should have been reflective in the salary ordinance that was agreed upon in the CBA agreement. What has happened since the full enactment of the salary ordinance is that a couple police officers noticed that their pay was not fully reflective, particularly field training officers, but also to the additional titles for, I think it's professional command, service command, and training coordinator, was not fully reflective in their pay for two thousand twenty-five. Once that was brought to our payroll staff in the controller's office, our payroll staff is bound by the city ordinance, not necessarily the CBA. Kind of once we recognized that discrepancy, we felt it was necessary to bring that to the council's attention as soon as possible because ultimately affects their pay, and we want to make sure we clarify matter of record, especially if there's some type of audit by the State Board of Accounting, and make sure that those, that pay and that disbursement of pay is reflective. As part of our conversation, we did notice there were some other things that kind of brought to our attention. So in front of you, there is a redlined version of the proposal of amending ordinance ten of two thousand twenty-four for the FOP CBA and then also to the Professional Firefighters Association CBA. Particularly, so three things we're essentially asking. Adding the two titles for professional command, training coordinator, then also two, adding the five dollars per hour per training that the field training officers will provide those when they're on active duty, as reflective in the CBA. And then one technical error that we had discovered today, which is why the need to provide additional amendment, is that on the past unsigned salary ordinance for police and fire on page two, under technical pay, in which I highlighted, we are, there's a duplicate in terms of recruit, field, tactical instructor. There should be two of them there. There's two of them there, but the actual second one needs to say operator. So it should say recruit, field, recruit, tactical, field, operator. I might have got that wrong, so please.
Rescue Task Force Instructor.
Rescue, I apologize, thank you. Thank you, I apologize. It's a lot to be able to articulate to that all. So again, with the urgency for that, again, is to correct that issue, but then also to make sure that's reflective on their next pay if you guys decide to move forward with passes of first reading. If you have any more particular questions about why and things like that, Chief Bigsby from Lawrence Police and then also Chief Wallace from Lawrence Fire can ask, can give you a lot more specificity on that. But generally, I would see this as technical errors that we had a little oversight last year. There were a lot of salary ordinance back and forth, and we just want to make sure we clarify that for the record and submit this ordinance and give you the much information as possible. Thank you.
So are we in discussion?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do any councilors have any questions for discussion?
So I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. I will not be voting in support of passing on the first reading. I do acknowledge that all those changes need to be made. They're clerical errors, but I believe that in our haste to get things done quickly, that's when errors are made, and I'm not going to rush to do that tonight, and then we find out that maybe there's one or two more errors that were oversights. I'd like our legal to have an opportunity. You're just bringing one of them to us today, so we didn't even have knowledge of it, another one that was found in error. So I'm not gonna vote in support of it because I want to make sure that we get a set of eyes from our legal team to look at it, and we can look at it more in detail ourselves, and then I would feel comfortable voting in support of it once I know that it's at a hundred percent.
I understand, and I absolutely respect that as well. Again, it's from the administrative perspective. We just want to make sure before we disperse those additional pay or back pay that those officers and individuals who may need them make sure that it's in line with our salary ordinance, obviously. So in case there is any type of audit in the near future that is reflective of our ordinance, and so we don't get dinged by the State Board of Accounting. So again, that is the urgency. The next pay schedule, I believe, is on the tenth, and then the final disbursement on the fifteenth. And so that is why we are bringing this to you, but understand that if you have some questions or concerns with the matter.
And I would, I would like to personally request that, you know, I know that we want to pay those that are owed the money that they're owed, and I would request that the administration consider doing an off-cycle check so that, my understanding, this only impacts a few people, a handful of people, and maybe if an off-cycle check can be cut so that they can get their money quickly, that would be appreciated.
I mean, ultimately, we want to do what's right, and I think we will get it done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. For the sake of procedure, I will now ask for consent for the council to consider this proposal on first reading. I'll proceed with the roll call vote.
You need a motion and a second.
Consent first, and if you don't get the consent, it doesn't move forward.
Okay, okay.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
This is for consent to suspend the rules and vote on first reading. Giles?
No.
No? Counselor Wells?
No.
Counselor Chavez?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Kramer, yes? Counselor Jennings?
Nay.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Crone?
No.
Counselor Missouri?
No.
All righty, let the record reflect that the proposal has not passed tonight, and this will be referred to our Public Safety Committee. No further action is needed tonight, and we will proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is comments of the administration. Do we have any comments to the administration this evening?
Thank you, councilors. First, I just want to give a few kind of updates from some questions that councilors asked in the last several meetings. Particularly, I know Counselor Crone has made some infrastructure inquiries last meeting regarding constituents concerned about traffic that's happened on Indian Lake. Director Street Jim Hennigan explained and addressed this issue via email and safely cited there will be a significant financial undertaking for several reasons. Rightaway acquisition for homeowners, engineering costs, utility locations, and stormwater drainage improvements, and overall construction costs, which includes curbing and sidewalk, and I know this request was made to you. You know, we acknowledge the public concern, and you know, infrastructure project has to be prioritized, especially when it comes to funding, and especially, things are happening at the state legislature. We just have to be very mindful of that, though there are still options that we can do, and we have systems in place to make sure that when there are projects that we need to move forward with, we try to be diligent about that. Another question and kind of response that I want to speak on behalf of the administration. I know Counselor Wells and Counselor Missouri had questions regarding engaging lobbyists. You know, these questions were raised about the administration seeking professional service to represent and advocate the city at the Indiana State House. I just would say there are current legislations that's happening right now that can have a significant impact on our budget as well, and having utilized professional service and advocating on behalf of the city is reflective of that need, right? Last year, our efforts were focused on rezoning. It was focused on grant opportunity, road reform, you know, things like that. That was under a different administration. Now with the new administration and new class of legislators, there's different goals and different needs for the city. Particularly Senate Bill one and related legislation could have a significant impact on the city budget due to the restructuring of property taxes and tax formula for the city. Utilizing professional services with our lobbyists, and I will introduce them here in a moment, is vitally important for the city to advocate for those. Just know that if there's a change in tax structure, particularly property taxes, of business personal property taxes, that's gonna be really reflective of our revenue of our general fund. As of twenty-four, I believe, nearly forty-three to forty-five percent of our general fund revenue comes directly from property taxes. So this is something that the council should absolutely keep an eye on. I know last week, last Monday, actually several council members had an educational productive conversation with one of our lobbyists, Scott Carr from Catalyst, that kind of get a breakdown analysis of that. And now, if you have any questions for our lobbyists particularly, I would like to introduce Angela Vander from Krieg and the Vault and Scott Carr from Catalyst. If you have any questions.
I have questions. Thank you for coming. One of the reasons that I voted in support of hiring your firms was the, I guess it would be Unigov is a huge problem for our city, and we do not have authority over our zoning or code enforcement. I was told that the lobbyists would be working towards getting with. I was told that the lobbyists would be working towards getting with the state, with the legislature and get that, I would assume that it would be, you know, a repeal that we would end up having our own enforcement capabilities. Can you enlighten me as to any progress that was made or anything that was done towards getting that done?
Yeah, thank you, counselor, and thank you, councilors, for having us, for being here this evening. Thank you, Madam Clerk, as well, too, for having us. We negotiated in several conversations at the Indiana State House last year on this specific topic, not to mention many other numerous topics that relate to the Unigov statute and the excluded city statute, which is underneath that. It resulted in one-on-one conversations between the administration and the twenty-fifth floor of the Indianapolis City County Building. My understanding of that is that has then even led to most recently a meeting between the administration and the city to further those conversations and move them forward so that Lawrence would have greater flexibility or autonomy, depending on how that language looks at the end of the day, to be granted that privilege of the zoning process.
So when can we tell our constituents, yeah, we can now go to our inspectors and our inspectors can now, you know, do the enforcement and we can, you know, we can take action ourselves? When can we expect that?
It's a great question. So in, there's a couple of different paths, working with the city of Indianapolis that may come through an agreement that does not require legislative enactment of statutes with the state of Indiana. If that's the case, we would negotiate the date certain on that, presumably with the goal, I would say, being prior to July one of this year, which is when a statute would go into effect if it weren't acted by the legislature. And so to Scott's point, we continue to have conversations with the city. I think along those lines, we have legislators in the State House that are interested in helping to see those final changes made, and so we will continue to have discussions on a successful path here with the goal of July one there being some changes to either the statute or an agreement directly with the city of Indianapolis. And I would just say to that as a caveat, the legislature is a chaotic beast, and so there are no guarantees in this business, but that is our goal is to reach that. And I think along those lines, last year, with it being a short session, they were in for about seven weeks. By the time, you know, it was almost over before it started. We had language drafted, we met, to Scott's point, with a variety of legislators, both Democrat and Republican, generated support, and it was a function of timing of the legislative calendar last year. And so again, with the goal of continuing and finalizing those conversations this session.
So I'm to understand you that you not only are lobbying state legislature, you're lobbying, I guess, the mayor of Indianapolis for cooperation with this?
Well, I'm not saying we wouldn't. Our actions at the Indiana State House led to a conversation between the two administrations to see if they could enter into an interlocal agreement that would essentially provide that autonomy. You know, certainly, if asked, we could participate in those conversations as well, too. I actually was invited to the most recent one, but was tied up at the State House and at their legislative meetings, was unable to make that one at that particular time.
Do you know if the administration has any sites to retain you for this year?
Yes, we've had conversations. We are in, one month into the legislative process. I gave a briefing to multiple members of the council last week where we covered numerous pieces of legislation that are currently moving through the process that would impact the city of Lawrence. So I do believe that we anticipate continuing being advocates for the city. That's as far as, I can only speak for myself.
Nope, that's right. We've, I've talked with the mayor and her staff as well, and then because we're in the session and our relationship, and we hope it will be one that is long-term, I think Scott feels the same way. I had a conversation this morning with a bill, or this afternoon, with the author of a bill that affects the chief of the Lawrence Police Department. And so the author has indicated that there'll be an amended vote on a bill later this week, wants to know if that takes care of our concerns. If it doesn't, he's open to making additional changes to that bill that address the concerns of the city. So our work continues as we move through the process of finalizing any engagements through the calendar year twenty twenty-five.
From my understanding, last year in twenty-four, you're, because it was actually approved, your fees were approved through the Board of Works, and that amount that you charged was way above their threshold, so therefore it came before the council. And my understanding, it was just for one year. So looking to see if, you know, you're going to be brought before the council again for another approval. So I guess the answer would be yes.
I defer to the city on that.
Yeah, I don't.
As always, counselor, I know ordinance number one last year, the council modified the professional services contract from five thousand threshold to fifty thousand. As written in the ordinance, should we anticipate or expect that professional service will exceed fifty thousand, then of course we will bring that to you. We have not finalized the number with our current contract, but I will let you know we have every intention to retain them, and should that exceed the fifty thousand, we will bring that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys, for coming. It's not very often, I have to say. I don't know if I recall us ever having our lobbyists stand in front of us like this, so I appreciate that. Wanted to talk about kind of some standard stuff since we got you guys here. How's it looking as far as support to the cities for, you know, like the crossroads, I think it's the crossroads, is it the crossroads? That provides us with streets? Yeah, how we're looking there, you know? I'm concerned about our utility with, we have a sewer bond, and I know we're gonna be moving forward with that, but I know that we got some bold, we need to do some big bold things to really get where we need to be, and I'm sure we're gonna need support from, what's the right state name, IMD? You know, so I'm curious about those things. I'm sure you're doing those things to help us. Curious to see what, you know, what's going on there to kind of help us move forward as a city.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll take the first, but I think what's most important to note is we have a brand-new administration and state government, right? A brand-new administration means an entirely brand-new set of players who are managing state government. The new governor has dramatically changed the way in which state government is organized. He's done this in eight verticals. He's reestablished the way in which that process works, and he has hired, basically, I would say ninety percent of his staff is all new, especially at the director level or above. So with that, we're engaging with them. A lot of this is education, right? I can't tell you how many times I have a conversation with a legislator and I have to say, okay, there's Unigov, there's a Unigov statute, and then there's excluded cities, and then there are included cities as well, too, right? And I have to sort of walk them through this process and educate them on just Marion County in general. There are twenty-five new legislators this year alone.
Right.
Twenty-five. That, you know, we're talking almost a third of the entire General Assembly is brand-new to the body. So not only are we working, then we've turned around and do that with the administration as well, too. We have to walk them through that process, we have to make them understand that. And once you get them to the point of where they understand the layout, now we can communicate the challenges. Hey, by the way, the city of Lawrence, you have, and I'll use the road funding bill that's going through, right? There's a road funding bill going through right now that'll, that'll impact community crossing grants. Let's say Marion County does A, how does that impact an excluded city? And we have to take that into consideration and say is it a positive or a negative, and then go have conversations with stakeholders, both in state government and at the legislature, to inform them of that.
Because I know I watched the state, the reason I was interested is because I watched the governor's state, the state address. A friend of mine, we were debating on, did we hear a mention of Indianapolis or Marion County throughout the address? And we were debating that. And so it sounds like, I just want to make sure that you are, and I know you are, fighting hard for Marion County, our urban city, and Lawrence Speedway and Beech Grove and Southport were unique, and we appreciate the work you're doing. Make sure the guys downstate know that we're here, okay? And, you know, civil workers need retirements, not just dairy farmers. And, but tell them to invite me to the farm and I'll invite them over here on Forty-Sixth Street, and we appreciate the work with them.
Thank you, counselor.
I can take one more question, please. And I don't know if this is either guys' wheelhouse or not, but Pendleton Pike goes right through my district, and the, the state of Indiana has made this median thing with these crazy U-turns and, and I understand it's there, and I understand, you know, that we have little, anything to say about it because it's a state highway. Although, one of our constituents, or two of my constituents, business-wise, have been in the city of Lawrence for a really long time, and that would be a, for a mobile home, and they have no access to go across Pendleton Pike, and they're dragging these sixteen-foot wide, eighty-foot-long mobile homes. And now they really have no real way of getting them to the interstate to get them to wherever they take them. And, and to say, well, coming in is really not a problem, but going out is a big problem. The same with right across the street is a RV company, Fun Time Campers, is, do you have any input or any sway with the state highway department?
That would be, that would be also part of our conversations we would have, and that's the reason why it's so important to have advocates at the State House. And it's important to have advocates before state government because it is a much more productive conversation when you can have it on the front end, when they're building the state highway and when they're designing the state highway, to take things into account like that, then to come in afterwards and say, hey, we got a problem here. And the perfect example I'll give is the Blue Line with the BRT Rapid Line on West Washington Street. There is a major manufacturer there that has fifty concrete trucks coming in and out every single day. And the original proposed way in which that road was gonna be designed would have made every single one of those trucks make a right and then make a U-turn at the stoplight down the road, and it just wasn't gonna work, right? And so they were able to get in there and fix it, both statutorily at the State House and then by ordinance and interlocal agreement at the local level as a way, too, to sort of remedy that on the front end. But to answer your question, yes. In, you know, if there were something to come up tomorrow where there's an issue with a business in your community, you know, communicating that and helping us understand it so that we can have conversations with, at the state government level, whether that's the Department of Transportation, IDEM, you name it, would all fall under our wheelhouse.
Well, we had, IDEM was here a couple of years ago when they, and they put these posters all up and down the walls on both sides of what they intended to do. And I came to that meeting and I was looking at the posters and I did not see the obstructions of what they have now. And they apparently had another meeting that I wasn't able to attend, which was, I think, during this administration. And, and apparently plans changed. And, but they, and even for the ineptness of, they have these U-turn things, and when someone is going on the Pike and makes a U-turn, someone's coming out on a side street, they get the arrow at the same time. And I almost had a head-on collision with a guy that was trying to make a U-turn, and we both had the arrow, and they weren't even, they were oblivious to that possibility that that could happen. And I talked to my insurance agent about it, and she said that, yeah, we've already made claims on that already. And so we had a presentation from IDEM here, I don't know, a few months ago, and I spoke to the lady, and she said, oh, yeah. And she got me connected with someone from the state highway department who called me, who seemed very, very genuinely concerned, and now it's all crickets. You know, this has been a couple of months ago, and when I call his phone number, you know, it goes to voicemail and he never calls me back. So anything you could do towards that, you know, if nothing else, if they would just listen to these two companies to the, I mean, it's just, it's a horrendous problem that they have created for them by putting those medians down the middle of Pendleton Pike in front of, in front of their businesses.
Yeah.
No, absolutely. And the only thing I can think is maybe there's been a change because that change in administration, there is a new director, the Department of Transportation as well, too. So we, you know, depending on how those conversations went, that's something that we can reflag for the department and try to bring those conversations back online.
It'd be appreciated if you could get someone to reach out to us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Jennings, did you have anything to add?
Oh, yes, yes. I do want to thank you for, for meeting with us, the councilors that showed up last week. I also want to thank the mayor and the staff for putting that together. It was, it was informative. I just had a point of clarification about, I think we talked about fourteen oh-two and SB four, four, four-three. Can we talk about that?
The business personal property tax bills, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the thirty percent max, is that, it was lifetime.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure I heard, I heard clear. They're talking about moving that to zero, but not giving any kind of pay for in replacement, right? Because I'm kind of for that. If I'm a business owner and I have some broken-down equipment, I mean, it makes sense to bring that to zero, but we need to replace that funding instead of putting it on the homeowners and, you know, stuff like that.
That is the ongoing debate. They did hear that bill last week in tax and fiscal, Senate Bill four, four-three. I, I need to check the calendar. I don't think it's up for an amended vote this week. I think it's up for an amended vote next week. But they have until February the eighteenth, which would be committee deadline for the first half of the legislative session. From there, they'll move through the process, second and third readings, the bills will flip, and they'll start the process all over again and go forward from there. So we're a long way from making law, but very much engaged in the process. And again, that education is where a lot of lawmakers and others are starting to learn what the impacts are of the legislation that moved forward. So it's important for us to just be able to speak from Lawrence's point of view.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any more questions?
All right. Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And again, I just want to make a point, it's not unique that the city will utilize two lobbyist service. Both firms have strong, unique skills and relationships at the state level, and some on the federal level, to make sure we communicate the needs of the city. So that's why we're utilizing both. We are trying to maximize both efforts in that communication and advocacy on behalf of the city. Just a few other general announcements. Happy Black History Month. The city will have its annual Black History Month celebration held at the Theater at the Fort on February twenty-sixth in partnership with Art for Lawrence. More details will be announced. Also, too, the city of Lawrence Fire Department EMS was officially certified as an EMS Training Institute by the state of Indiana. This designation will reduce the outsources of training for EMS here for the city of Lawrence, but then also to an opportunity for other agencies to work with the city to meet Indiana's training standards. Also, too, want to welcome a new employee to the city of Lawrence. Former Elkhart Mayor, Indiana Jim Perrin, will serve as Director of Communication for FUN Development. Jim will seek out state, local, and federal grant opportunies, opportunities, opportunity, excuse me, and funding, alternative funding for the city. Jim and his wife are residents here in Lawrence, and he currently serves as Chairman of the Board for Public Works and Safety.
What's the name of the title again?
Director of Communications for FUN Development.
FUN or FUND?
FUND, FUN Development.
FUN? I think we have a good time in Lawrence.
FUND, FUN Development. So if you have an opportunity to see Jim at the Board of Public Works or throughout the city, just tell him congratulations and hello. And that's all. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. The next agenda item is citizens' comments. Citizens' comments shall be limited to three minutes. If any citizens wish to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. We'll begin with Chuck Knapp.
Mr. President, City Council, my name is Charles Knapp. My wife and I live at fifty-seven twenty-eight Wallingwood Drive. We've been residents of Lawrence since February the seventeenth, nineteen eighty-five, and very proud to be a Lawrence resident. However, we, our neighborhood on Wallingwood Drive and Boy Scout Road has a horrible traffic problem, and I've come here several times requesting help with that, and additional speed limit signs, stop signs, a speed hump that might slow people down. You would not, unless you lived on our street or lived on Boy Scout Road, you would not believe the speeds people drive, drive up and down the street. I've submitted a plan to our representative, Mr. Giles, and we still just are kind of waiting, that was September the twelfth, I believe, at one of the city council meetings. So I just come to you, you know, just requesting. So, I just come to you, you know, just requesting very strongly that something be done. People up and down Boy Scout Road think that a three-way stop at Boy Scout Road in the intersection of Wallingwood Drive might not stop anybody, but at least it would be something that we think might stop honest people. I frequently, I set my drive, my speed, my speed control at 25 miles an hour, which is the speed limit. I frequently have people pass me by on a double yellow line on those ninety-degree curves. They don't know if traffic's coming at them or not. It's extremely dangerous. Something's got to be done. And I just, I leave it up to you guys. I can send what I sent out to everybody if that'll help as far as what we're asking to be done. The other question, and our neighborhood has been through the wringer three or four times the last year or so. The latest one was a notice in the, in the Indianapolis, one of the Indianapolis papers that was dated 25 January of this year. And it's AT&amp;T has hired Crown Castle as a subcontractor to put up a 27-foot telecommunications utility tower. And the address they gave was 5828 Boy Scout Road, which is not an address. There's nothing there. The homes don't have those numbers on them. And then they gave a latitude and longitude which is even different than that. And they said, if you have questions, they gave a number to call with concerns. I called the 26th of January. I have never gotten a call back from these people. I've talked to the DPW here in Lawrence. They've said they're going to have to file a permit for the construction, but since it's in a utility easement, there's not a lot that we can do as a neighborhood. The whole character of our neighborhood is low-key. We, you know, forty-seven-foot-tall tower.
Because it's not, I'm sorry, it's not an address. I'm trying to figure out where is it? Is it what it?
It's between, it's kind of between two homes or it's, it's.
Is it on the north side of the street?
It's on the west side of the street, Boy Scout Road.
On the west side, I mean, on the west, so it's on the west side of Boy Scout.
Yes, sir. So it's not on the park side. It's actually in the middle of the neighborhood.
Oh, wow. So I was thinking maybe on the park side with road bins on, you know, I mean, it's kind of dead right now.
Well, you know, and the problem is we have people in the neighborhood that are elderly. Some of them have very specific problems as far as frequency goes. These things, there's no real studies yet about long-term effects of this stuff. But just so that you know, the National Association of Firefighters has now gotten something on the books that says you cannot put one of these things up within so many hundreds of feet of a fire station because nobody understands or knows what the long-term effects are. We do not need our fire department or our police departments exposed to this stuff, whether it's short-term or long-term, but we also don't need our neighborhood exposed to that. So that's, that was the second thing I wanted to talk about today, and I've actually got a neighbor that wants to come and talk about it. She's done a lot more research of this. She's a retired nurse, and so she has some, you know, a little bit better understanding of that. But just wanted to let, make you aware of that. I don't know if y'all would have any control over approving or disapproving a permit for a utility easement construction. I don't know if that's just a DPW or not, but I do, at some point, I'm going to try and get a, schedule a meeting with our mayor and talk to her about this and see if maybe we can get her support or something on this. Because this is, our neighborhood has been through the wringer, is all I've got to say. As many, and I, and we appreciate the help y'all have given us these last three or four attempts of people to change the character of our neighborhood. This is just something else. It's just the next thing. It's just the next thing, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your order? I know that we're not supposed to comment during public comment, but it's okay to say, maybe stick around?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Next up, we have Andrea Ostrander.
Hi.
Hello.
President and members of the council, I've not been up to speak with you before. I'm not sure of the protocol, if I addressed you properly.
Can you just please state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry?
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrea Ostrander, and I live at 5738 Wallingwood Drive, right next to Chuck Knapp. And he's told you about our neighborhood issues, and we are a pretty tight-knit little neighborhood. And my concerns is with the fifty, or.